I'd like to call this meeting of the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School Board to order, please. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Keller, would you please lead us?
My Pledge of Allegiance is-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Suzanne, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Emmons?
Here.
Ms. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Eustreck?
Here.
Mrs. Justum?
Here.
Mrs. Sujeki?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
President Sickitt?
Present. Proper notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the open meeting laws of the State of Wisconsin. Any board members or Dr. Elixman's changes or additions to tonight's or modifications to the agenda? I have nothing. Board members? Seeing nothing, we will s- hmm. I'm gonna guess we don't have any public comments, but I will now, is there any in our audience that would like to address the board at this time? Absolutely seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. So, in the legislative report, I'll start there. There's a couple things going on. We know that the budget is bogged down, and the major sticking point is still the transportation part of the budget, trying to work through that. And then I think we'll, you know, see a budget come through that includes the education portion. We haven't heard of any big changes, other than there's some conversations taking place now that are policy. And I think, you know, residents of the State of Wisconsin are pretty familiar with what happens towards the end of a two-year budget cycle, is we suddenly get a bunch of policy that gets slipped into a budget. And so we're watching, and SWSA is helping us kind of monitor the kind of things that might show up that impact education, in particular, you know, the funding or accountability mechanisms for voucher schools, right? So that's one that is being talked about. There's some conversation potentially about expanding the Opportunity Schools Program that was built into the last two-year budget around MPS' lowest performing schools, and including schools that were seen. So that's a piece that may pop up in the budget process. The other piece that is new recently is Senate Bill 383, and that impacts the way schools are funded in terms of the delivery of revenue. And right now, we get revenue from the state in September, December, March, and June. And it's different kind of percentages, so, and that is what creates some of the cash flow problems that districts have if you don't have a healthy fund balance, right? So you get a big chunk of money, you use that money, and then there's a period where you don't have reserves. So this will help us, actually, because the proposal is to distribute the funds in all equal payments throughout the fiscal year. And that would actually be good for us. We're supportive of this, because it smooths out some of the peaks and valleys in revenue. So we're supportive of that one. And then on the federal front, there's nothing new at this point. There's been no conversation, and it starts to make me a little bit nervous, because the federal budget fiscal year starts October 1st. And so we're hearing very little on the education side at this point. I'm gonna save congratulatory resolutions, because we want to talk about music. So just a couple quick updates. There were no public comments on July 24th, so I have nothing to respond to there. Planning for the new school year is what I just wanted to update the board on. Everything is on track. We're looking good, and I think we're, any surprises that are emerging, we're aware of at this point, and one is, you know, the transition to Skyward, or the conversion to Skyward. Has popped up a couple things where we will have limited access for a short period of time to some of our electronic curriculum, some of the digital tools that we use, because the student information all flows through Skyward into the third-party vendors that we buy curriculum from, that, you know, then gets loaded into iPads and devices. But we have a contingency plan in place, and we're working really hard, and I know Deidre's all over, our salesperson, from AgroHill in particular, as one of the vendors that we're trying to get them to move it along, right? So they want to continue to work with, do work with us. But there's, you know, all of these parties deliver digital content that works with Skyward, and it just is taking longer than anticipated. But other than that, you know, transportation is on track, so Jeff Borland is really on top of that, and we're working hard to make sure we don't have any of the same mistakes that we had last year when we opened the school year. But one of the changes will be that there are fewer routes, right? So we've changed one school time, and then also, we've changed the number of bus stops. So there are bus stops essentially in some routes on every corner, right? And so it really is now a change, so that elementary kids can walk a certain number of blocks, and then secondary kids could walk further, up to a quarter of a mile, to get to their bus stop. But we think that's reasonable and consistent with wellness efforts to get kids out and moving. But it may cause some disruption for parents that are used to their, you know, bus stop right on the corner. But it is an efficiency that makes sense to us. And then in terms of enrollment, we're right on track with our projection, actually a little bit ahead right now on the paper count. But that's always a little bit misleading at this time of year, because what you don't know are the no-shows that are still in the paper count, right? And so we'd like to be well ahead, or a couple hundred students ahead, but we've got some weeks to go yet, and the enrollment center seems to be staying pretty busy. So I think that's encouraging, that we're just a few students ahead of the spring projection at this point, and families coming in every day. And then, lastly, we started with new teachers today. So we had the first gathering of our brand-new teachers coming in, Nathan Hale, and that's probably had about ninety people in the room. And so they had their first introduction to the team. And then we spent a good portion of time with them on the HR side and all the benefits. So Mary Capel, Capel, you know, shows up and walks them through step-by-step everything they need. And so that helps them kind of work through those pieces, because what they really want to do is, you know, be in their classrooms and get ready for kids. So there's a lot of time built into their week to do that. So with those updates, I'm gonna shift over to, you know, the congratulatory resolutions. And we're just gonna focus on one thing right now, which is the summer music experience. And we've got folks that have been a really big part of that that are here. And then we have a DVD that we'd like to share, but what I just, first for the, you know, public that may be watching, and we want to make sure we really celebrate this. You know, over the summer, there's a lot of enrichment opportunities that take place in the district, right? So we're really proud of those things, and music and theater are just, are one of those pieces. But this summer, there was a really busy schedule for music. There were a hundred and ten orchestra and prelude strings students that took private lessons or participated in the Summer Chamber Orchestra. All of the orchestra teachers taught lessons this summer, so that's a big thank you to Kelly Schultz, Sam Graybo, Casey Unger, Kathy Kolb, and Mary Pat Michaels. There was a twenty-person chamber orchestra that presented a forty-minute concert on July 13th, directed by Mary Pat Michaels. And this is related to our district's college and career readiness goals. Mr. Larry Warren, area composer and arranger, came to one of the orchestra classes and spoke to the students about his career, and what it's like to arrange music for orchestra. We had forty-five band students that took private summer band lessons, which were taught by Bob and Judy Howlett. We had forty secondary orchestra students from all six of our secondary schools that participated in the West Dallas, West Milwaukee Shining Strings Camp. Then they presented an overlong concert on July 21st at Franklin Wright Intermediate. Shining Strings is directed by Mary Pat Michaels, and performs throughout the community and beyond during the school year. And this past year, performed at more than twenty events. And then to cap it all off, we had Fiddler on the Roof Junior, and that was presented at Central High School on August 10th and 11th. That is through the Recreation Department, and Central, and Nathan Hale, and all three intermediate schools, and five of our eleven elementary schools, Franklin Hoover, Madison, Pershing, and Walker, had students participate in either the cast or the crew. So forty students from all levels participated in the outstanding summer theatrical opportunity. I was there on Friday night, and just loved it. Yeah, it's just so impressive to me how good it was in such a short period of time, working with kids that haven't worked a lot together as a cast, right? So that's part of it, too. So I really want to recognize the production team of Jordan Pollard. He was the director, the production manager, and he teaches at Franklin Elementary. Zach Beeksma, the music director from Nathan Hale High School. Jamie Hollenberger, assistant music director from West Milwaukee Intermediate. And Nate and Jordan are here. So thank you very much. It was, I just love the opportunity to see our young people in the middle of the summer. So, Mary Pat Michaels would like to share the DVD, and this is from the-
Summer Chamber Orchestra.
Okay.
You wanna clap?
I know. Excellent. Thank you, thank you for playing the Lady Gaga hit mix. That's my-
Yes, I don't-
That was my request.
I wasn't having to know, that's awesome.
Who played the piano?
Sam Graybo.
Pardon me?
Sam Graybo.
That was, he teaches at where?
Central.
At Central Lane.
Could you just tell us a little bit about the composition of this group? You've got a lot of males in there, as well as female, and quite a mix of ages.
On your program, on the blue one?
You have-
As part of this?
Mary, Pat, you have just to give them.
On the red.
On the blue one, it'll show- Oh, fantastic, good, good. That's great. I got to see Fiddler, but I didn't get to see this concert, so we-
So it shows-
I need to see the green one.
The kids, and then in the parentheses of the schools, they went to, and then where they are now. So, because for some of the kids, if they were at a middle school, going to a high school, they want credit for both. They want people to know they're going to high school, but they also want to say, I came from so-and-so. So I have that all listed here. So the kids in this group, the youngest one was Bailey. She's at Irving, going to Lane. She was a fifth grader. And then the oldest are Nicole and Jacob, who are, as you can see, going off into music at UW Milwaukee in violas. And Jacob and Key going to NYU in the basses. So, huge range, and it's really good, obviously, the mentoring component for the older to the younger kids works out really well.
And what they have to look forward to, as they come into the present school year.
Right. So some of them are hanging on for dear life, and some of them, this is, you know, just coming to play and having that summer experience, but all together, it works out really well.
And I don't know if you or the boy, the gentleman would like to talk a little bit about their summer production of Fiddler, because this is the first adventure we've ever had, where drama has been done over the summertime to interested students, and if you plan to continue it, just what's your hope for? Because we need to do a little better job of communication if we're gonna continue this, to get to a better audience.
Yeah, so the program started after I received an email from another city's Park and Rec Department, asking if I would like to direct their summer junior youth theater program. And so after I received that email, I immediately emailed Shelby Strasser at the Rec Department, and I said, hey, is this something we can do in West Dallas? So it didn't make the brochure, but we were able to get flyers out to the students, and we were really pleased with the turnout that we had, and we hope to continue and to, you know, not start from behind the eight ball next summer, but just have a plan going forward to make sure that students are aware of participating in the program, and that the community is more aware of the performances.
As you do that, the summer groups, they have a lesson fee structure for taking their lessons. Will the same thing occur for this, so it's kind of an in-servicing thing, or is it just the opportunity to do free community theater?
Yeah, so they enroll in the program through the Recreation Department as part of a way, just being a brand-new program, part of the way that the program is able to be sustainable. So there's a fee involved, and we kind of equate that to just like playing on a recreational sports team, there's the fee to-
It's like lessons.
Right. And so throughout the summer, we taught theater games, as well as just some acting technique, as well as preparing for the final production.
How often, how many times per week?
So we met three days per week for two hours. So prior to Tech Week and the dress rehearsals, we had forty hours of rehearsal only.
That's crazy. Great voices, and very, very connected. Is it your hope to do it next year?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Do you have a show picked out yet?
We have some things in mind. We don't want to announce them yet, in case things fail.
Gotta get the rights.
Well, then now, the music. Tell us a little bit about how you recruited the people for the music.
Yeah, so we, for most of the weeks, had one of the rehearsals out of the three that was dedicated to music rehearsals. And so knowing that all of these students came from different backgrounds, some of them were in chorus in their schools, some were not, working with the idea of how do you sing in tune, and teaching them basics of vocal production, and we worked on using breath, and being aware of your body, and singing in tune, and hearing harmonies. And some of the older students also were, you know, asked to lead, same, kind of the same thing in there. Like, I think with some of the seniors that are going off into college, like Mariah, that was helping some of the younger students figure out even what page to be looking at, going from that all the way up to students going into music next year in college.
I think that's awesome, so let's just make it bigger and better next year, and whatever we need to do to help you get people involved, you know, more than happy to help.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And thank you for not accepting the first one and calling Shelby.
A great summertime experience for the kids, just great.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. And that concludes my report.
Great.
Okay, move to the my report, which will just be the updating of the calendar. We do not have any workshops following tonight's meeting. Next week, we do have a board retreat with the WASBA, the Wisconsin Association of School Board and district, all our district leaders. Then on Monday, the 28th, we have our regular Board of Education meeting, followed by Human Resources Workshop, where we will review employee sick time. Monday, September 11th, we have a regular Board of Education meeting, excuse me. Monday, September 18th, at 5:30, we have our new teacher meet and greet. Following that, at 6 o'clock, will be the public hearing on the 217, 218 budget. And then on Monday, September 25th, we have our regular Board of Education meetings. Just a reminder that our Board of Education meetings start at 6 o'clock. They are open to the public, and they are also televised. Our workshops are open to the public, but they are not televised. Any community things going on since our last meeting? None?
Franklin Wright's Dino.
Oh, yeah. I have to get into that mode now, that it's full-time, full-time. So new this year, I will be sitting as treasurer as Franklin Wright's PTA, and our first out and about is this Thursday to coincide with Forms and Fees Day. So if you are out and about and eat dinner, Cousins on 92nd and Lincoln is gonna donate a portion of the proceeds, badly needed proceeds, to the Franklin Wright PTA for this school year. So go have dinner at Cousins.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have two items this evening. 9.1, the approval of amendments from our July 24 regular meeting, and 9.2, the employment summary on supplemental contracts. Does any board member need those separated out? Seeing none, we will take those as a whole consent agenda. Motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Those pass. We will move on to our action items, of which we have four. 10.1, Board Policy Number 363.2, computer and internal network, electronic mail, pardon me, and Internet acceptable use policy for students. This is a second reading.
All right. Good evening. So this is our second read for the student usage, and we did the first read in April, and Stephanie gave us some comments that we put in towards the end on page seven.
The delay between this one coming back for a first read and a second read was some questions by the board to investigate a restriction or a ban on cell phones in the classroom. So we went back to the principal group and got a bunch of feedback from them. They have requested at this time, the principal group said, as a group, we don't want to go all the way to a ban until we try to put some more restrictions in place, and see if that's not enough. And then talk about that further as we go forward. They asked for there to be some clear communication around what's supported in building policy around the use of cell phones at school. And then they also asked us to try to make sure that the building policies on use of phones is somewhat consistent across especially the intermediate. So we've worked with the principals on looking at those policies together in order to bring this policy forward back to the board for the second read. But that's why there's a delay of a pretty significant amount of time between the first read and the second read. No?
So for those individual building policy, obviously, we're not gonna see those. So I presume that, you know, that they can, so they can be similar, is that going through, they're just working the other to make sure that they're the same? Is that gonna happen at elementary school levels and high school levels as well, or how is that being done?
The two high schools have different concerns about cell phones and different ways to manage cell phones. One of the, one of our high schools, Hale, they actually made a request that we, that they actually use the cell phones for instruction in classrooms on a pretty regular basis. So the teacher group there, the leadership group, had asked us to not put that ban in place, and they didn't seem to feel there was as much of an issue with managing the devices in that particular building, based on the way they had structured- in that particular building, based on the way they had structured their plan. And then at Central, you know, with a new administrator, who have a different plan and a different rollout around those things. So, there wasn't as much need at the two high schools for the plans to look, you know, very close together or similar. They have the same philosophical base, obviously, is that you shouldn't have your phone out unless you're using it for something that the teacher asks you to use it for. But at the intermediate school, that's where there was a great variance in whether or not students could use them in the cafeteria, or whether or not students were allowed to use them at lunch or before and after school. So, that was where some of the principals said it would be easier if there was just a more consistent policy across the three intermediates for that. So, they've worked on clarifying that together at the start of the summer. We now have one new administrator at the intermediate level, so I'm imagining that they'll review that again after this policy is approved.
Did you talk with teachers or just principals?
I took it back to the principal group. They took it back to teacher groups in their buildings. So, they took it back to their leadership groups in each building. And we've been doing a lot of research at the other districts in our area and kind of what they're doing. The districts that went so far as a ban really spent almost a whole year in communication around why they went down that road and what would happen with all of the devices. We didn't end up connecting with TOSA, which was in our plans. End of the school year was clearly as busy for them as it was for us. And we didn't end up connecting with them to discuss like how they're managing and what they're doing with their devices at school.
Well, I would say ninety-nine percent of teachers that I've talked to, cell phones are a huge issue. And my best friend and college roommate is a teacher in all of TOSA, and he said it's the best thing that they could have done. So, my understanding from the teachers that I've talked to, that that's what they want.
So, one of the thoughts that goes along with this, because there's two dynamics. One, right, you could do a complete ban. Or you go down the road of teaching kids to use them properly, right? Because it is an adult skill that they're going to have to have, right? So, we all have to learn to manage our devices. And they're very powerful learning tools as well. And so, what we're proposing here with this is really to do a communication strategy. My intent is even to meet with some student groups, meet with the student government groups to talk through this about, you know, what the concerns are that teachers are raising and why. To explain to them, this is the campaign that we're launching, but around, you know, what is appropriate and inappropriate use. And then several times during the year to do a quick pulse survey with teachers, to get some measures from every teacher about, you know, is this disruptive? How disruptive? How often do you ask kids to use cell phones in schools? Because I'd rather understand the problem more fully before we go down the road of making a complete ban.
And the other thing that, you know, principals asked for was some consistency around that. Teachers have asked for them, be some consistency in the rules. So, we have two different things tonight that we're looking at. One is the acceptable use policy, which, again, replaces the bring-your-own-device policy and puts some restrictions and some legal language on our liability for devices that come into our building and students' obligation to use the devices. We give them appropriately. So, right now, we have the bring-your-own-device policy, which is our current active policy around technology use in schools. So, the policy is designed to replace that one. The other thing that we've worked on is kind of do's and don'ts sheet, that if the board chooses to approve that tonight, then it would say, "Board approved," at this meeting. And then we would be giving those in a laminated form to every single classroom teacher across the district. That just gives some clear guidance on what our expectations are around the use of your personal cellphone in a school setting. And so, we talked about those in board committee, and then we also ran them by some of the principals just to say, hey, is the language what you're looking for? And one of the things on there says, you know, don't make the superintendent make there be a ban. That was important to put on there, and then that's what Marty's talking about when he says he's going to do his district-wide communication. Because what we have assured teachers and building principals is that if these restrictions that we're putting in place this year aren't enough, you're going to see a new policy coming forward, you know, halfway through next year or next spring, that says, yep, now we'd like to take the steps to go all the way to a ban, pending some of this information gathering that we feel like we're getting. Because I was surprised at the number of principals who said, oh, my teachers asked me. Please don't go that far just yet.
You know, that's a very, you know, I can live with that, and I, you know, I accept that. But we've got to have clear communication on where the line is to be drawn, you know. What's the metric to get rid of it, you know? If we take a teacher poll and over eighty percent of the teachers say, no, I don't want them, is that the metric? Or, you know, what are we going to do? What's going to have to happen for you to ban cell phones?
Oh, I think if, yeah, if we have eighty percent of the teachers saying this is a regular disruption, and rather not have access to the tools, then I think that's pretty clear. But I also just want to test some questions, you know, is it getting better with the communication strategy? Right? So, do some of that kind of learning as well. But, you know, we're being really honest, and we've also included this in the draft letter that goes out to all parents for me, that, you know, we're going down this path, and if we're not successful, we'll ban them. Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I just, I want to do it in a way that's thoughtful.
Great.
Communicate, that's what we want.
Right. No?
Yes, I think this is the right way to do it. Jumping from nothing to everything is generally not a good idea unless there's some severe circumstances involved. I just would like to echo Bill's concerns in making sure we're communicating like we're serious. Like, this isn't just like, you know, we just want to try to get a couple of people to do it. Like, this is going to be exactly how it's going to work. And if it's not worked this way, to really drill into the teachers and administrators that they need to make sure that they're upholding these policies as they're written. If someone's doing a don't, then that consequence needs to make sure to be enforced uniformly across the board, so that there's no issues in that guard as well. And I know Dr. Luxby talked about speaking to student groups, but I don't know if it would be a bad idea to do, I don't know if you have like whole-school assemblies or things like that at the beginning of the school year to kind of reiterate this to all the kids. I mean, you're kind of relying on the student groups to just send me this information down versus saying like, look, this is what's going to happen. This is new for this year for the cellphone policy, and this is what's going to be required of you guys. So, no one can say, well, I didn't hear from my student president or my whatever, bandleader, that this is what's going to happen. I didn't know this was serious, even though it's posted in every classroom. So, that way, there's no excuse, even though you're sending it to parents, and it's being something that's being signed by everybody. That way, they know we're serious about it, and if we have issues throughout the school year, no one can say, well, I didn't know, I didn't have a chance, or whatever.
Looking at the do's and don'ts, I don't see where it says that can you use them in the hallways and the cafeteria, or don't use them in the hallways or the cafeteria. So, I didn't really see that in the policy, and I, where did it?
And that last sentence under do's, it says, follow the school rules. So, each school will have their own rules for what the acceptable policy is for those areas. Yep, correct.
So, okay, I saw that, but I kind of thought that what the idea was is that we didn't want people walking down the hallways or in the cafeterias using their cell phones. So, now you're saying that if they're using the cellphone in a productive way, walking down the hallway, I thought that was one area that we were pretty clear on, that we did not want. And I don't see how you could be using it engaged in a lesson plan, walking down a hallway. But I suppose it could happen. Go ahead.
Look, with regards to this, so, remember when we brought this the first time, that we empowered the schools to have their own policy? So, if Lane says, you can't be out in the hallway at all, or it's getting confiscated, then that's the rule that they're going to follow. If West Milwaukee says, it's okay to have it in the hallway, text your mom and tell her that your lunch was good, then that's fine, but then once you get in the classroom, then it's got to get in the bag. And that's kind of how that sets, that if West Milwaukee decides it's okay to have them in the hallway in order to contact a parent, what have you, then West Milwaukee can manage that use and communicate that use. Whereas if Lane decides absolutely not, it's in your locker from eight AM until three-thirty PM, and you can't take it off or anything, then that's their policy there. So long as they're following the guidelines that are outlined here, then the schools can make their own personalizations that work for their building.
And it does say in the policy that's proposed for a second read tonight that if we feel like that's not doing what it needs to do, that Marty and I have the authority to go in and revamp and revise and work with them on their policy to make sure that it's productive for the learning environment. So, that was kind of the change of language. I'm misquoting that, but Adam will go with that in a second. The change of language that was suggested from the first read to the second read, that was added to the policy.
Yeah, so, on, which would be page five of five under consequences, the things that were changed from the first read were, if you look at the first, well, we bullet pointed it to make it a little bit easier to read in policy format. And then it says, I'm reading them out, first bullet point, third line down, that the individual school level that is relevant to their school and student body, that part was added, and then the last, the entire last bullet point was added, what Deidra just talked about, at any time the district, meaning Marty and Deidre can, and will review the individual procedures being utilized in each school and make changes as necessary.
I just felt that there was an inconsistency there when you're saying that you're using your cellphone to engage in academics. And then I didn't see where there was an area that's saying, we don't want you walking down hallways. And I just see a problem there, but.
We also have to be cautious, because if the do's and don'ts list has entirely too many things on it, and it's too detailed and too individualized, then putting it up in classrooms won't do us any good either.
That's fine.
Right, because it's going to make it, that becomes really difficult to be impactful if it's got too much information on it, or if things are too line-item specific, then you're getting into an area where you could be in an argument with somebody over one word here or there. So, we were careful in some of that language on it.
That's fine. Well, we can revisit it, you know, as the school year goes on.
Yep.
Just one last thing. I think that first bullet point there about engaging in lessons, I think that's for classroom use, because I think there are times, as you said, at certain high schools, where the students do use them for educational purposes. So, I think that's where that specifically is. And then again, some of those other situations that you were referring to, such as the hallway, the cafeteria, the school's going to deal with that on a more individual basis.
If it works, it works. Comment on the classroom behavior, classroom management. I just think it's really important that the teacher is not out of the loop on this, that it's their responsibility to conduct good classroom management with that phone. Some classes are much more conducive to using that cellphone, like computer and instructionally, and others, it just almost has no business being in the room. And in case, the point is physical education, which we've heard a lot about this year, and students so misuse their time and are inappropriate with their usage of it. But if the teacher isn't going to monitor it, then we've got a problem. So, teachers got to enforce that rule. We've given them the opportunity to do so, and they've got to really enforce that.
Yep, and this is on the things that pending approval tonight that we'll discuss with principals and talk about just that tomorrow.
Great.
No?
Just one last thing about the district reviewing, you know, if it's an issue. Are you going to utilize the surveys you talked about to determine that? Or just like feedback you're getting from parents and stuff? Or like, is there going to be a formal way to determine if the school's rules they put in place are effective or not?
I think it's going to be through the survey, or if we start getting anecdotal information that says, okay, what's happening is not working. And I think we've got to go in and look at that particular circumstance at that school. And understand, okay, why is, you know, what you've laid out not working? Is it classroom management? Is it not being communicated well? Are the kids not being held accountable when they do cross the lines? And then start making changes. You know, if there are kind of critical incidents, then we're going to respond to that. But then, again, gather information, is it improving? And if it's not, then I think we're in the place where we'll do the complete ban.
We also get the review of the behavior data from the buildings, and so you can get a gauge on if there are an exorbitant number of referrals from a building for cellphone use, well, clearly, the policy is not doing what it needs to do. If half an administrator's day is being taken up by monitoring people's phones, right? Then the policy is really ineffective in that school, and, you know, maybe needs some revamp as well. So, as we review some of those behavior records, you also get a lens on, you know, what's the, what are the core things going on in the school? And the schools review that information on a regular basis. Like, how many referrals have we had this month for this, that, or the other? And then what do we need to do with our PBIS time to dedicate a positive message around getting that problem to stop? And so, most of the schools have their PBIS goals are written around what they had that many referrals around before. So, Central, when they did a rollout of a revamp around that information for their cell phones, they had a good chunk of time last spring where it was being consistently monitored and consistently followed in the classrooms, and then they had significantly fewer issues and fewer referrals and all of those things around cell phones. So, they have data that they collect around those things in buildings all the time, and they use it to figure out what their next steps are.
How often do you plan on administering the survey?
I'm saying probably once a quarter.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
Remove. Second.
Any last-minute questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That passes. We'll move on to ten point two, the employee healthcare slash health risk assessment. Mr. Crome.
Excuse me, so, we had a workshop on this, I believe it was July twenty-fourth. We talked about the incentivizing a health risk assessment for our employees. The Health Steering Committee recommended fifty dollars, which would be six hundred dollars over the course of the year. They recommended providing it as an incentive to take it rather than a penalty for not taking it. In order to accomplish that, should be noted that healthcare premiums need to be raised to fifty dollars in order to provide the incentive rather than keeping them exactly as they are and then just adding fifty dollars to the employees who choose not to do it. That is kind of more of the stick method of doing it and penalty rather than the carrot method, which was the recommendation from our Health Steering Committee. Again, the health risk assessment is, really has two major functions. One, it gives all employees who participate a snapshot of where their health is related to, say, blood glucose or blood pressure or cholesterol. It also gives the district an aggregate measure of where our employees are at, and allows us to build a more well-rounded wellness plan based on where our employees actually are versus just kind of a guess, and I hope we're hitting it. With the six hundred dollars a year or fifty dollars a month, we're anticipating about ninety percent of our population will take it. And that is going to leave ten percent of our population not doing it and paying that additional six hundred dollars a year. That's going to come up to about forty-five thousand dollars in premium. As discussed at the workshop, the Wellness Committee has recommended using that forty-five thousand dollars for our wellness programming and kind of establishing its budget to be self-sufficient. Currently, our wellness budget is part of our human resources plan, and there's money budgeted inside of that for wellness, but this would allow us to have some self-sustaining funds as well. We are all scheduled to roll with a comprehensive health risk assessment event on August twenty-fourth. That's at Nathan Hale, starting at six-thirty in the morning, going to eleven-thirty. Starting very early because it is a fasting finger poke for the blood portion of it. We are hosting a follow-up event. Right now, we have it set for September twenty-fifth. We have not determined whether that's going to be all at one location here or whether that's going to be at several buildings throughout the district. A lot of that would depend on what we're going to be doing with the professional development day and how those things are going to be laid out. From our standpoint, it's easier to host it all at one event because then we don't have to worry about having a certain amount of employees at each place that we're going to have it and trying to meet those minimum requirements. We could get more people done if we have it at a central location such as Hale, that we're having all of our teachers there on the twenty-fourth. But certainly, anybody can go get their health risk assessment done at the clinic. I've gone and got mine at the Wellness Center and taken care of that, or you could get it at your primary care physician. And the employee communication has all the information on how to upload it if you have it done outside of the event. If I have it at the event, all my information just gets uploaded with the whole report. WA is covering the cost of our health risk assessment, so we continue to utilize that function. This year's employees only. Next year, we would love to add spouses. We've talked about that with, at the Health Steering Committee as well as in our presentation on the twenty-fourth.
Questions?
What is the date that the employees must complete their health risk assessment by to get their?
Very good. November fifteenth, and it would be applicable January one of twenty-eighteen. Then, November fifteenth coincides with the final day for our open enrollment as required by the Affordable Care Act. And so, it just made sense to tie it in there. If you're going to take the insurance, make sure you get the HRA done is all part of that.
And as board members, we are employees, correct?
You are. But good clarification, it's only for employees on the health plan. So, retirees on the health plan does not require of them. Employees not on the health plan, also not required of them. But I guess it is voluntary. I better make sure it's clear. It is voluntary.
They are able to, retirees are able to do it if they so choose.
Not at the event, but they could go to the Wellness Center.
Yep, that's right.
Yep, but it does not affect their premium whatsoever. And certainly, employees not on the health plan doesn't affect their premium, because they don't pay any premium. on the health plan doesn't affect their premium as they don't pay any premium. But it is employees on the health plan specific.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye? If that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to 10.3, the 217-18 School District Goals. This again is the second reading, Policy 111.
Yep. Thank you. So there are no changes from the first reading. We initially thought we may have some changes in service to our stakeholders and community, and that's because Beth hadn't had the opportunity to review it, but since then has. And I'll remind the board where these goals come from now, for the yearly, the five-year goals come right out of the strategic plan that, you know, was developed more than a year ago now. The yearly goals now come from one of our shared leadership teams. So that was a team that met that included teachers, administrators, secretaries, custodians, and there's a group in each of the four building blocks of the strategic plan. So these were the goals that they felt after reviewing last year and the progress we made that they felt good about and thought they'd made sense for the targets we set for this coming year.
Questions? We got the next one? Concerns?
No, sorry, there was one change. Thank you. But we didn't have, so if you look at employee engagement and culture, the last bullet in red, voluntary teacher turnover reduces to 12%. So we ended last year at 13.47. Now, we didn't have that reported when we did the update for the end of the year, just because it's a snapshot we take at the end of June. And so it's actually come down, it's a tick or two down, not a lot, but we were in the 14% in the baseline we had for this past year. So it's moving in the right direction.
I just have a question on the employee engagement culture and culture. And you talk about, or no, wait a minute, I'm sorry, it's college and career readiness, and it's the last bullet. And it says, students will demonstrate creativity so they're better able to innovate and problem solve, baseline to be set. When and how are you going to set that baseline?
So this year, and this may be a Deidre one, you want to jump in, but we're introducing a new student survey, it's called Panorama, and it measures social emotional learning. And there are a number of these new tools that are coming into education. And so one of the things we'll be measuring is curiosity, is one of the metrics that they ask questions around. So we think that will likely lead to setting a baseline here, but we're also going to measure things like grit or perseverance.
Self-regulation.
Self-regulation, so that's emotional regulation. So, and so it asks kids, it gives kids prompts, and so it's a way for us to get some information about how they're developing beyond kind of the academic realm, because we think it's important that we're paying attention to the whole child, right? And we do a lot of work in SEL, but we don't measure our kids actually improving. And so this is one of the areas that we committed to in the strategic plan, this notion around creativity. And so now we're introducing a tool that'll help us set some baselines this year to better understand, are we making a difference in that area?
Yep. And the design of the tool, and we reviewed quite a few of them, this one is going to be covered by the School Climate Transformation Grant, and we got some feedback from a couple of other districts in our area that use it, that it is exceedingly easy to administer, it doesn't take a lot of time out of the classroom, which was one of the key things that we were looking for, and that the feedback that it gives is essential to designing your programs and making sure that you're meeting the needs of the kids.
That is a great question, thanks Beth.
College and career readiness, if we're really serious about the vocations that we'd like to help kids get introduced to before they leave high school, looking at where we stand with our electives in the vocational areas, family consumer ed, business ed, tech ed, are we making any, any changes, any, any opportunities, greater opportunities, so students get some exposure to our elective areas?
Well, last year, they did a couple of things to do that. They took some videos and then had some of the CTE teachers go to the intermediate school and start talking, from the high schools, go to the intermediate schools, start talking to some of the students. We expanded the choices at intermediate school in those elective areas as a feeder program a little bit more so for the other courses that are offered at the high school level. The biggest thing that we have to do is that 80% at the 61st percentile, because the reason that we don't have as many students taking some of our elective courses is they're in an awful lot of intervention during the day. And until we can solve some of those problems, the students don't have time in their schedule to take some of the things that we would prefer that they were taking, which were our more hands-on, innovative, career-oriented courses. So we're always trying to ramp those up and revamp those. We spent a lot more time with the counselors and some of the CTE staff this year so that counselors were better able to make good recommendations on the courses kids should choose at the high school level in particular. But that's some of the issue with the elective courses, is that we have a lot of students who are still taking either math or reading intervention, and that's not allowing room in their schedule to take some of those courses.
I just would like to make a comment on what you just said. I found in the past, and I think that because you now have Student Services and Curriculum underneath you, or under your direction, that a lot of time counselors didn't really have an understanding of all of the vocational opportunities, and didn't highlight them for their students. Do you think that have now under your leadership, is there a greater, and Gwen, that there's a greater understanding of what vocational opportunities there are for our students?
Yeah, I would say that's certainly an area that Gwen, in particular, takes with, by taking over the ACP, has done a lot more work with the counselors. The counselors and the CTE teachers were in quite a few trainings this year. There's a Community Business Lunch with Employee Milwaukee, who is our new partnership for our youth apprenticeships, next, I want to say Thursday or Friday. And the CTE teachers will be going along with the counselors together so that they can understand a bit more about what these businesses are looking for, and how do we give better advice to students as far as what they want to take during high school in order to be better prepared for whatever their choice is post-high school graduation? So I would say yes, a lot of that has come from Gwen, in having that flexibility to, you know, be a little less siloed and have everybody kind of working together as one team.
Is this the first year we allowed middle school to select electives on their own, or choose what classes that they wanted to take?
No, we've had other years where they chose what classes they wanted to take. We really went this year to more of an exposure model, so that's where the courses are written more in 45-day versus 90-day courses. So it allows students to have that greater opportunity to see a few more of the areas of engineering, or to see a few more of the areas of the woodshop kind of classes and the technician kind of classes where they're building things and doing things. Because it's at that middle school level that you want them exposed to a wide variety of things, which gives them a better opportunity to choose what they really want to take when the time comes.
We allowed them to choose their classes this year, right? That was the idea?
Um...
Because some of the feedback, and I could be wrong, but some of the feedback I heard from some parents was that they didn't know this, they didn't understand what the process was, and then they didn't get to choose. It wasn't really elective, they were just given, you know.
Right, so...
So there was some confusion at some of the schools where, you know, the parents weren't aware, and, you know, I know they don't send out emails, and sometimes those aren't always read.
Yep. So sometimes if the student, again, we're back at kind of that intervention question. So if the student needs to take quite a few interventions, the choice that they get is significantly less, right? Because we have to meet those, A, they're required by the state under our TI, if you're in law, if you're a student who's not proficient in reading and or math. And then, for our strategic plan, we have to get some of those skills brought up to speed. So the students who, if it was a student who was assigned to certain number of interventions throughout the day, that does make the choices that they take in the areas of electives quite a bit less. If they take a foreign language and a music class, well, then they don't have a lot of choice when it comes to some of the other areas. And we did limit the choices so that there aren't quite as many at each of the schools, again, going for more of that exposure model where a student may take a wider variety of things just so that they can start getting some exposure to things that they might want to choose. So it'd be hard for me to say kind of a yes or no to that question, it really depends on the student and their individual plan.
Yeah, I just wanted you to know what I've heard from people, that they didn't know, you know, so, you know, it's...
Appreciate that.
Anyone else?
I just hope that we're doing visually to acquaint the student before coming into high school with the opportunities that we're presenting them with, away from the academic area, so that they know what they can sign up and take. And to me, a student has a greater drive to learn the academics when they can see the relevance in the skill.
Yep.
It's really important.
Yep.
And it's concerning to me, as we lose more and more elective teachers, and still have this career college, the college and career readiness theme out there, just how significant is it if we're going to continue to just let the electives erode?
And that's some of what we talked about at Board Committee, there'll be a workshop, I want to say we put it on the calendar for January, where we'll talk about the youth apprenticeship and some of the soft skilled work, and some of the additional job shadowing and things like that that come with the Insight Software that we have now through Career Cruising, which the goal of that, that is exactly what you're saying. Sometimes the exposure to what students need to be able to do in order to expand their choices, less so, they don't always see it when they're physically in the high school, but if we can connect that to what happens post-high school, or what career opportunities are out there, and then an employer says to the student, well, you should take X, Y, and Z, and we turn around and say, well, great, we offer X, Y, and Z in the high school. That is where we're hoping to make some more push in that area for students to really understand that there are a lot of opportunities right here locally for us. But we have to make sure you have the skill set needed for those, or that you have to be ready to go into a training program for that. So connecting the students directly to the businesses and being the intermediary between them for those CTE courses and the courses we want students to take as electives, that's what we're going to try to do some work in this year. And hopefully, that will create more of those students having that aha moment about what the opportunities are for them post-high school, whether it is to go into some kind of training program, or straight into a career, or onto a post-secondary institution for further education.
Dan?
Thanks, Jeff. Just to mention real quick, I think that the, over at Nathan Hale, when they had Central and Hale do their mock interviews, I think that helped the students quite a bit. The other thing I might say is that when, when people come to these meetings, as far as here at the district, they're welcome to discuss things as far as what's going on in the community, because that better helps the board and you try to make some decisions. And that also gives those people out in the community a little bit of a voice. So, you know, I haven't heard too much as far as going on in the community, but I think, I think right now, we have a pretty good handle on it, and we're handling pretty well as far as communication goes, so kudos. Good job.
Thanks.
Anything else? Motion to approve?
To move. Second.
We've had our discussion and questions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye? 10.3 passes, move on to 10.4, the district organizational chart.
Yeah, so the organizational chart is tied to policy, is why we're bringing it around for approval. And there's just some small changes in this, and the board's been aware of, I think, all of these, as we've kind of worked through some of the dynamics of the last couple of years and then planning into this year. So changing the Chief Advancement Officer position to Director of Communications and Community Relations, adding the Manager of Human Resources, changing the Manager of Employee Services to Employee Services Specialist, because that aligns in the structure to having a manager of human resources. And changing the leadership team structure at LANE to the co-principals for this year, and then reducing an Assistant Principal position at FLOW. Now, Noah asked a question on email, I don't see the Assistant Principal on the, on the additional Assistant Principal at FLOW. And that was a position we added, it was a .6 FTE that we knew was going to be reduced in the administrative reductions, you know, going back two years, because administrators are in two-year contracts. And that's where we put the additional support at FLOW, but never came back through to update the organization chart at that time. But I just wanted to be completely clear and kind of upfront, you know, that position is no longer in the administrative positions of the district.
Pat?
The proposal that you have for LANE intermediate, and actually, all of this organizational chart, is this organizational chart just for the school year, or for as long, until you change it again?
Right, it would be until, while we would propose changes again.
Okay. I'm concerned about the LANE thing, I just really am concerned about that. There just got to be a leader that emerges and clear direction for the school, and I just don't think co-principal cuts it. And especially in light of the fact that populations of the intermediate schools, they're certainly not as big as Frank Lloyd Wright, so that concerns me a great deal. And I will put my plug in for the director team, going back to what it was before, I think you need that. I'm concerned that there isn't enough individuality and strength with each individual area, which I think it needs to have, so that you've got a team that, that works around what you wanted to administrate away at the top.
I appreciate that, and we'll certainly look at that as we get into the next budget planning round.
Just one question, it popped into my head, for the two assistant athletic directors at each high school, is that for the start of the year, or are they hopefully selected and ready to go as soon as it's approved, or...
That's a position that we added last year. I'm trying to think at what point, this is Amanda, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Amanda.
Right, we're just catching up to some of those things that were, you know, changed along the way.
Somebody did, and just didn't document that.
Got you, got you.
Sounds okay. Thank you for answering that. Any other questions? Sue?
It's not a question, it's just a comment. It would have been nice if you had names in here, so that you knew who was doing it.
I understand that, but the board doesn't approve the names, right?
No.
So that's why we don't have the names in there, the board approves the structure.
It's just fun to know who's doing it.
I can pencil them in for you at the next meeting.
Names in executive session from time to time, but in terms of the policy side of it, it's the structure that the board, it's at that level the board approves.
So, do you mind if I ask another question? You have a .5, you know, you have a couple of .5 deans, academic deans, so they're being shared, I suspect, so they're being shared at schools. So they're going to, what, spend three days or half the day at one school and half the day at another, at another school? Is that how, because you have one, two, three, four schools that have .5 of academic deans.
So the way that the structure works right now is that there's shared responsibilities in most of the buildings. So at Longfellow, the person that's filling that role right now is a .5 academic dean, .5 math interventionist, so that they can stay in the building full-time, they just serve two roles. One of them is a half-time tech integrator, a half-time academic dean. So it depends on the person who applies and fulfills the role, and whether or not they have a skill set that keeps them. Sharing people to drive between buildings for that kind of work becomes very challenging. Somebody's always getting shorted on their time then, that's just how it always works out. So we tried in the buildings, in the smaller buildings where there's only a .5 academic dean, to strategically look at what are the needs of the building, and if the building has a need that fills that other .5, it keeps the body in the building all day long.
Okay, so then what you're saying, or if I'm understanding, you're using Longfellow as an example, that that academic dean is an academic dean for half the day, and then she, he, she teaches a class?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you couldn't be a grade teacher then.
No, so she happens to be a math interventionist, so she does some small grouping, she co-teaches with the math teachers to provide some opportunity for enrichment for kids. She does extension activities with some of the students who need extension activities from the classroom.
Do we have math intervention, interventionists at every school?
Nope. We have a full-time math interventionist at MAN, and then we have some at the high schools. We have a couple at the intermediate level here and there, but some of that is just driven by some of how we use the title money, and some of it's driven just by the needs of the building and the scorecard and the strategic plan. So some buildings have more reading interventionists, some buildings opted, felt that really their need was for somebody to work with their teachers around math, and so then they might have a math interventionist.
Dan?
Excuse me, I'm just glad that you were able to take into consideration the transportation with teachers, because at one point, I think it was becoming, it's becoming difficult to try to make the stoplights and stop signs and to get over from point A to point B. So I really appreciate that fact. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion to approve 10.4, District Organizational Chart?
To move. Second.
Thank you, we've had our discussion. Thank you. We've had our discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposing nay?
No.
And move on to number 11, Suggestions for Future Agenda Items, but I might also add in there workshop topics. If not, you know, if you think of it during the week, shoot Steph or I, or I know, next time with Marty, we'll bring it up. Then I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? See you next week for our board workshop. We are adjourned.